Good evening, Chair. Calls are ordered. Public hearing for Bill 23-032, Tax Credit for Properties Near Refuge Disposal System. Mr. Sandless, Mr. Richardson, whenever you're ready.
Mr. President, thank you very much. For the record, Lawrence A. Richardson, Jr., Harford County Government, Office of County Executive, members of the council with me today, I have Robert Sandless, Treasurer for Harford County, who is here to provide some information relative to the bill before you right now.
Thank you.
So this is a bill that comes before the council each and every year, but this is the first time that it comes in front of this council, and it's something that we've been doing since the early 90s, and that is to provide a full county property tax credit for those properties that are near the county-owned refuse disposal system up in Scarborough. And more or less, the idea here is that the county needs to have a landfill, and but of course, a lot of those costs are disproportionately borne by the individuals who reside near in the form of additional traffic and noise and all of those things. So we are required to bring this legislation before January of each year. This is for the upcoming tax year that will start on July 1, and there are 36 properties that are owner-occupied and that qualify for that, for being 1,000 feet by the, in proximity to the landfill. The estimated cost for this will probably be about $80,000. This year, there were 35 for $74,000. It fluctuates from year to year by one or two as properties become owner-occupied or not owner-occupied, but it's generally in that vicinity.
Thank you, Mr. Sandless. And in the past, I know we've had to track some folks down, but understand that that's not as bad this year.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot better now at getting all of the email addresses and phone numbers, and sometimes, you know, we have to send out a couple reminders, and if all else fails, we turn to the local councilman. But this year, we did not have to do that, but stay tuned for next year because you never know.
Okay, council, at this time, anyone have any questions? Mr. Bennett?
This is more so curiosity, but with this going on for so long, has you or anybody in the county noticed any trend for the property owners as far as like when people have moved? Has this tax credit made it easier for them to make the property desirable to purchase? Or, you know, like, has it been a benefit to the homeowners in those kinds of ways?
I mean, to the extent that they are receiving, you know, a few thousand-dollar tax credit, that's certainly beneficial. As far as the number of homes, I mean, I'm not sure if there's been an increase of individuals who would say, let me go out of my way to buy there so that I don't have the property tax concern, because again, you know, there's a whole lot of negative externalities that they have to deal with. And it generally bounces around that 35, 36 number, so some years 37, some years 34, but, you know, there's about 60, what do I have, 60, I think there's 60, yeah, there's 65 total properties within the 1,000 feet, and, you know, the maximum, though, that could be owner-occupied, because there's some that are owned by the county, is 51. So again, it bounces around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There are no speakers, Mr. President.
Very good. This will conclude this public hearing, and we'll take this up at a later date. Thank you, gentlemen.
President, Ken, Mr. Counsel, thank you very much.
So we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Good evening, Chair. Calls are ordered. Legislative session day 23-28. Please join us for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Janjordano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask you to help orient all our actions by your inspirations. Carry them on by your gracious assistance, that every prayer and work of ours may always begin from you and through you, be happily ended. I ask you to look over our veterans as we honor them this upcoming Saturday. Amen.
Amen. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations. This evening, we're honored to have two of our deputies here this evening receiving awards. If I may, I'd like to start with Deputy First Class Nicholas Marks, please come forward, and anyone that you'd like to bring with you. Mr. Marks.
Pat, you want us down now?
In just a second. Yes, I do, actually. Yeah, you would all come down. Mr. Janjordano, whenever you're ready.
Whereas on Wednesday, February 16, 2022, Deputy First Class Nicholas Marks was traveling on Philadelphia Road when he observed a vehicle crash just east of his location. He noticed that it was a serious multiple-vehicle crash, took immediate action, and began rescue efforts, and whereas DFC Mark observed that both vehicles' engine bays were fully engulfed in flames, knowing the extreme danger of a vehicle fire, he still approached the remaining occupied vehicle to rescue the occupants without regard for his own safety. As other deputies arrived on the scene, it was discovered that there was still a child in the vehicle where the driver was just rescued. DFC Marks returned to the burning vehicle, located, and removed the child to a safe location. Had it not been for the actions of DSC Marks during this incident, the citizens involved were at risk of losing their lives. DFC Marks displayed conspicuous gallantry above and beyond the call of duty where he intervened during this life-threatening incident, and whereas due to his heroic actions, DFC Marks was recognized by the National Sheriff's Association as the 2023 Deputy of the Year for Valor, and recently recognized as one of the four finalists for the International Association of Chiefs of Police for Police Officer of the Year. He was also proclaimed the runner-up for the 2023 award with three other officers from Houston, Chicago, and Los Angeles. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on the 7th day of November 2023, do hereby salute Deputy First Class Nicholas Marks, Harford County Sheriff's Office, and extend our sincerest appreciation for his dedication to the safety and security of the citizens of Harford County.
So if I may, I know you've been recognized all across the country for your efforts, but we thought it was important to recognize you here at home and tell you how much we appreciate all that you and your fellow deputies do to protect and serve this community every day. So congratulations, thank you, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to the sheriff.
I just would like to thank the council first for taking the time to recognize Deputy Marks, Deputy First Class Marks, and as we will, Captain Scott Walter in a few minutes. Standing on not just the national stage, there's roughly 3,500 sheriff's offices across the state, across the country, and this is the third time that a member of the Harford County Sheriff's Office in the last nine years has won Deputy of the Year, but this one was for valor, which is outstanding, standing on the stage with Nick and his wife Heather hidden back here at the Grand Rapids, Michigan during the annual conference, was an honor, and then to be nominated, the International Association of Chiefs of Police is just what it says, international, global. To be one of the top four police officers in the world is remarkable, to come from our community, and so indicative of the work done by our men and women every single day. So I want to congratulate Nick, and you can't do it without a great family and Heather who's hiding back there, and again, the council for taking the time to recognize him tonight.
I just think it's amazing that we have such dedicated officers that just disregard for, it seems like almost like a disregard for your own safety. You ran into that fire, you took one person out, and you realized there was somebody else there, and you went back in. I mean, that just says just unbelievable courage and valor here to do that, and, you know, just shows what love we have in this county, so we appreciate all your hard efforts.
Congratulations again. We're going to have a little photo.
Heather, Heather, you want to come in?
I try.
Hi.
Yes, we're good.
Photoshop. If I may, Captain Scott. Anyone else you can bring with you?
Just me.
Just me?
Whereas Captain Scott Walter, Jr., of the Harford County Sheriff's Office, has been with the Sheriff's Office for over 20 years. During his career, he has served in various divisions with the organization, including Traffic Unit, Gang Unit, Special Operations Division, Motorcycle Unit, and Patrol Division. In addition to working within these divisions, Captain Walter is also a motorist instructor, defensive tactics instructor, drill instructor, firearms instructor, and polygraph examiner, and whereas beyond serving Harford County as a law enforcement officer, Captain Walter is a role model and pillar of his community. He has devoted hours to working on charitable events at the Moose Lodge for fundraising events, volunteering for the Valor program, and making countless presentations on his own time at elementary schools, and whereas throughout his distinguished career, Captain Walter has received numerous accolades, commendations, and awards for his outstanding service, including the HCSO Valor Award and the Maryland Smooth Operator Enforcement Award. He has demonstrated a remarkable ability to inspire and motivate his subordinates to achieve their full potential. His leadership style is characterized by compassion and respect for those under his command, and his tireless dedication to their welfare and professional growth, and whereas Captain Scott Walter, Jr., was recently named one of the International Association of Chiefs, IACP, 40 Under 40 Police Leaders Worldwide. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on the 7th day of November 2023, do hereby salute Captain Scott Walter, Jr., 40 Under 40 Police Leaders Worldwide, and extend our sincerest appreciation for his dedication for the safety and security of the citizens of Harford County.
So congratulations as well to you, and I've seen firsthand, all of you, the involvement that you have throughout our county and the value that you bring to all of us, and I can't thank you enough for all that you do. And with that, again, I'm going to turn it over to the sheriff.
And I'll just offer again, Tony G. said it again, worldwide, the International Association of Chiefs of Police recognized Scott as being one of the top 40 future leaders in this profession. None of us are getting any younger. We have to turn to the next generation, and having this level of talent and others amongst our command staff here and in futures like Deputy First Class Marks, shows me, as sheriff, that our future here in Harford County is in good hands, and am I allowed to talk about hands?
Just one good hand.
Just one good hand. Scott fell last night at home, so among all his training thing was not how to work a ladder at home in the garage. His hand's broken in three places, and yet he thought enough of this presentation by the council, the council taking the time to recognize him and the IACP award with their own proclamation that he put on his uniform and came out tonight to be with us. He won't be allowed to wear that uniform until it gets to hand-fixed after tonight, but that's how much it means to him to be a member of the Sheriff's Office and a member of your community.
So which hand is it? So, I'm left-handed, so we'll go left. There you go. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for all you did, for all you do for the county, for the citizens, appreciate it. Amazing, all that stuff for under 40. I was going to say, you look under 30, so, but no, really, sincerely, we do appreciate that. I think we have the best police force in the state, probably in the country. We know people are coming here all the time now, they want to work for the sheriff and in this organization, so people like yourself, that we appreciate and all your dedication and hard work, so thank you.
So if I may, we're going to take a picture here real quick, and then I'm going to ask the members of the command staff to come up.
A little closer together, please.
We're going to get to one of the next staff, and Nick is there?
Yeah, let's do that.
Won't be a room for us.
Mr. Riley, and everyone with this way, did you all pre-stuff this with just a tad, please? Miss Boyle-Saddles, keep coming.
Sorry, Jacob.
Mr. Bennett, keep coming.
Like, here?
Yep, perfect. Good.
Where do you want me to go? See, I moved.
This way, please. Perfect.
Welcome, thank you, Sheriff.
Agenda item, whoops. Agenda item number five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Council Appointed 2024 Mako Legislative Committee Representative and Alternate. May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to appoint Councilmember Pennman as Council Representative for the 2024 Mako Legislative Committee, and Councilmember Riley as the alternate.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved in a second to approve the appointments of Councilmember Pennman and Council Representative Riley to the Mako Board. Any discussion? If I may, this past year, Mr. Pennman has served us well down in Mako. When we had our Mako representatives here, County Executive Count Ball and Michael Sanderson, they spoke to the relationship that they had, and we appreciate that very much, and looking forward to a continuous of that over the next year. Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle-Saddles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Thank you again, I appreciate it. Executive Appointment, Citizens Nursing Home Board of Directors, Mr. Bennett?
Council President, I would move to approve James Rodney Swam as a member of the Citizens Nursing Home Board of Directors.
May I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved in a second to approve the new appointment of Mr. Swam to Citizens Nursing Home Board of Directors. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I just appreciate that this is finally moving forward, so Citizens Care can have a full board. This is something that I know Mr. Walter over at Citizens Care is very happy about, and the board is very excited to have full membership now, so thank you to the county executive for moving this over.
Exactly. Anyone else? I too would like to thank the county executive I personally know, Mr. Swam. He's a lifelong resident of Harford County in Haverdy Grace, and he will do an outstanding job on behalf of the citizens. So, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle-Saddles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Agenda item number six, Special Presentations, we have none. Seven approval of minutes. Board of Health Fall 2023 Update. Public Hearing October 17, 2023. Legislative Day 23-027, October 17, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions, we have none. Mr. Vice President, please read for introduction Bill 23-034.
Bill 23-034, Distribution Hotel Occupancy Tax Revenue, introduced by Councilmembers Guthrie, Pennman, Riley, Boyle-Saddles, and President Vincenti. An Act to Repeal and Reenact with Amendment Section 123-68, Distribution of Revenue of Article 7 Hotel Occupancy Tax of Charter 123, Finance and Taxation of the Harford County Code as amended to require 50% of hotel tax revenue collected from hotels in unincorporated areas of the county to be expended for certain purposes in the council district where the hotels are located, and generally relating to hotel occupancy tax and finance taxation. Public hearing scheduled for December 5, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in these council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Please read Bill 23-035 into the record.
Bill 23-035, County Employees Midyear Pay Increases, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An Act to Make an Appropriation of Funds of the General Fund, Highway Fund, Parks and Recreation Fund, Watershed Management Fund, and Water and Sewer Fund for the current fiscal year to provide the necessary funding to cover estimated expenses to be incurred during fiscal year 2024 attributable to the pay increases for employees of Harford County Government. Public hearing scheduled for December 5, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in these council chambers.
Thank you. Also, please read in Amendments 1 through 15 to Bill 23-027.
Amendments 1-15 to Bill 23-027, introduced by Councilmembers Janjordano, Riley, Guthrie, and President Vincenti. Amendment number one, on page two and line three, strike R4 zoning district and substitute R4 and B3 zoning district. In the B3 zoning district, garden apartments are limited solely to the locations entirely within the boundaries of the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor. Amendment number two, on page two and line 13, after apartments, insert, in the B3 zoning district, garden apartments uses shall be permitted as a special development only in the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor. Amendment number three, on page three and line 11, strike the opening bracket. Amendment number four, on page three and line 14, strike the closing bracket. Amendment number five, on page three and line 11, after development, insert of garden apartments. Amendment number six, on page three and line 12, strike development envelope and substitute boundaries of the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor. Amendment number seven, on page four and line 18, strike classification and substitute classification in quotations, and in the same line after, in quotations, dwelling, insert in quotations. The B3 column is amended to permit them as a special development, permitted use only in a Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor. Amendment number eight, on page four and line 18, after, and, insert in parentheses, the line for use classification. Amendment number nine.
That wasn't a parenthesis.
Quotations. Insert, in quotations, the line for use classification. Amendment number nine, on page four and line 19, strike uses and substitute use. Amendment number 10, on page four and line 20, strike seven and substitute eight. Amendment number 11, on page five and line one, strike in brackets, and in the same line, strike deletions and substitute changes. Amendment number 12, on page five and line eight, strike three and substitute four. Amendment number 13, on the title page, strike beginning with, unless, in the sixth line down through 267-76, in the seventh line, and substitute, except for garden apartments located within the boundaries of the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor. Amendment number 14, on the title page, strike beginning with, unless, in the 11th line down through plan, in the 12th line, and substitute, except for garden apartments located within the boundaries of the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor. Amendment number 15, on attachment A, permitted use chart, Title 267, Attachment 19, colon dash 12, in the use classification line titled Garden Apartment Dwellings in the B3 Column, strike the brackets.
And after? There's more to it. And after? And after, SD, insert three. Thank you. Due to the timing, these amendments will be considered this evening, so may I have a motion to accept Amendments 1 through 15 to Bill 23-027?
Council President, I move to approve Amendments 1 through 15 to Bill 23-07.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in second to approve Amendments 1 through 15 to Bill 23-027. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I appreciate Council President Vincenti sitting down with me tonight to talk me through the amendments. I found that really helpful to look at a map together and identify those properties that would be permitted for garden apartments across Route 40 in the Science and Security Corridor, but I was just thinking with so many people in the audience, it might be helpful to speak to the amendments, some just so that people understand, you know, only listening what it is we'll be voting on in just a minute, if you would like to.
Go right ahead.
Well.
You want me to?
Yeah.
Sure. So, in our time listening to the citizens across the county, it's very evident that there's a place and a time for apartments, and we feel like if they're going to be allowed, it is along the Chesapeake Science Security Corridor. Not everyone can afford a home. We do believe that apartments are needed still here in the county. We don't agree with what's happened in Hickory. It's very evident, it's out of place, and no one that I've talked to believes that's a good fit. So that's the purpose of these amendments. Anyone else? Mr. Janjordano?
Thank you, Council President. I know we worked pretty hard on this, probably a couple months from before. I think it was evident, as Council President said, nobody liked the idea of all of a sudden finding out that there was a five-story apartment complex that's being built in Hickory. That was to my surprise in Councilman Riley's when we went in to look at another project that they were looking at on Route 24, and we happened to notice what was going on, and we asked the question, what is that? And somebody said, well, that's apartments, and we were like, what? So...
on the title page, strike beginning with unless in the sixth line down through 267-76 in the seventh line and substitute except for garden apartments located within the boundaries of the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor. Amendment number 14, on the title page, strike beginning with unless in the 11th line down through plan in the 12th line and substitute except for garden apartments located within the boundaries of the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor. Amendment number 15, on attachment A, permitted use chart, title 267, attachment 19, colon dash 12, in the use classification line titled Garden Apartment Dwellings in the B3 Column, strike the brackets.
And after?
There's more to it.
And after, SD, insert three. Thank you. Due to the timing, these amendments will be considered this evening, so may I have a motion to accept amendments 1 through 15 to Bill 23-027?
Council President, I move to approve amendments 1 through 15 to Bill 23-07.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve amendments 1 through 15 to Bill 23-027. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I appreciated Council President Vincenti sitting down with me tonight to talk me through the amendments. I found that really helpful to look at a map together and identify those properties that would be permitted for garden apartments across Route 40 in the Science and Security Corridor. But I was just thinking with so many people in the audience, it might be helpful to speak to the amendments, some just so that people understand, you know, only listening what it is we'll be voting on in just a minute. If you would like to.
Go right ahead.
Well.
You want me to?
Yeah.
Sure. So, in our time listening to the citizens across the county, it's very evident that there's a place and a time for apartments. And we feel like if they're going to be allowed, it is along the Chesapeake Science Security Corridor. Not everyone can afford a home. We do believe that apartments are needed still here in the county. We don't agree with what's happened in Hickory. It's very evident it's out of place. And no one that I've talked to believes that's a good fit. So, that's the purpose of these amendments. Anyone else? Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. I know we worked pretty hard on this, probably a couple of months from before. I think it was evident, as Council President said, nobody liked the idea of all of a sudden finding out that there was a five-story apartment complexes being built in Hickory. That was to my surprise in Councilman Riley's when we went in to look at another project that they were looking at on Route 24, and we happened to notice what was going on. And we asked the question, what is that? And somebody said, well, that's apartments. And we were like, what? So, this bill takes it back to 2008. Prior to 2008, there was no apartments allowed in the B3 zoning. There was a public hearing back then. There was a bunch of lawyers that came in, talked about it. And one of them said that, you know, the proposed code is balanced, and that changes could be made in the future. So, this is changes being made in the future to bring it back to where it was before so that there's no apartments being built in the B3 zone. So, Council President?
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riley?
Yes, when me and Councilman Giordano went to look at those maps, I tried to do everything I could to stop it. It had already been approved in 2017. So, there's no way it's District D, because that's where it happens to reside, that I could stop it. But I want to make sure it doesn't happen going forward.
Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
And just to clarify, for those who aren't familiar with the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor, that's located directly around Route 40. So, you know, that's, you know, proper placement to have resources near apartments, transportation and, you know, bus supports near apartments, you know, ample schools and businesses and grocery stores near apartments. So, that was the idea behind allowing garden apartments across there in case anybody didn't know what the Chesapeake Science and Security Corridor is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles, aye. Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, amendments 1 through 15 are hereby approved. Councilmember Pennman, please read amendments 1 through 3 into the record.
Amendment number one, on page one and line nine, after four, strike three and substitute two. Amendment number two, on page one and line 13, strike three and substitute two. Amendment number three, on page one and line 15, after four, strike three and substitute two.
If I may, Mr. President.
Yes.
I just want it to be clear that it's, these are amendments 1 to 3 for Bill 23-028.
My apologies.
Not the previous bill.
Yes, no. My apology. That's correct. So, again, with the timing issue, these amendments will be considered this evening, too. So, is there a motion to?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. It's been moved and seconded to amend or the amendments 1 through 3 to Bill 23-028. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jan Giordano?
So, this takes the bill that I introduced that has three terms with one term coming off and then you can run again, whether it's four years, eight years, 12 years, 20 years, to come back on the council. If the citizens choose to put you back on the council, then they'll put you back on the council. Originally, Council Pennman came out with three terms in February last year. That bill never made it to the floor. He pulled it the night before. It did come out a second time. A few months later, there was going to be an amendment then to make the term three years with succession, and he decided to pull that bill at that time as well. So, this bill goes back compromise. It is three terms, and it is with succession, meaning that, you know, if somebody comes back, if Jacob has, you know, gets off the council and 20 years later he wants to run again, he could do that. If Deion's off the council and 20 years he wants to run again.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
Pushing up daisies.
So. But I think it lets, I think it lets the people choose who they want to run. I mean, it's been, you know, if somebody doesn't want a councilman to be here, he's not going to be here. Curtis was on the council. Jacob had very little money. Jacob won. Curtis is not here anymore. Rob Wagner was on the council many times. He ran again. Jessica beat him. He's not on the council anymore. So, it's a, it's a pretty good system the way it stands with people voting for who they want and not who they want. So, I am not in favor of Aaron's amendments. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Pennman?
Look, I appreciate, Tony, I really do appreciate the conversation of term limits because prior to taking office in this council, there was no discussion on term limits. And Tony's right. I introduced this bill on two occasions. The first bill reflected this, two terms. You take one term off and you can come back for two more terms. That's exactly what we have for the County Executive, and why should the County Council be any different? In the sake of compromise, I did three terms, but there's no sequential number. You can't come back. That bill essentially failed because I made an agreement that I would have four votes for it. I did not have four votes, and I honored the words that I said. So, we reintroduced the bill when I did, while I believed I have four votes. And then it was going to get amended to this. Three terms, you take one off and you come back for three more terms. That's not term limits, folks. It's not term limits. It's not what anybody else thinks is term limits. It's not what the president has. It's not what the County Executive has, and we need two terms. And while this amendment may fail tonight, there may be two questions on the ballot. Two questions, whether it's this one or whether it's two terms. But I am 100% sure I will get 10,000 signatures and two terms will be added to the ballot. So, that's the history of it, but I do appreciate the conversation.
Mr. Guthrie?
This has been a long conversation, and I hate to say it, over something really small. And if you know, I did a survey on this whole process a while back. If you look up there, all those pictures, and count these council members sitting up here, since we've had this type of government in Harford County, there has been 51 council members sitting in these seats, including these seven people. Of those 51 council members, 39 of the 51 only served two terms or less by either losing, deciding not to run again, et cetera, et cetera. The 39 represents 76.5% of the people who have sit in these seats have only run for two terms or less. And that's 39 people. Four council members have served three years. Seven council members have served four, four terms, I'm sure, four terms. I'm going to be one of them, so I'll probably, that'll probably go to eight. We've only had one council member who has served 20 years, and that was Bob Wagner who just left. So, it's, we have spent a lot of time discussing this and working on it, but it seems when you take a look at 76.5% of the people who have served up here have all served two terms or less by their own. Either they lost the election, or they decided not to run again, or they went to Annapolis, or they died, or wherever it happened, you know? So, I don't know. It's a lot of discussion, a lot of, excuse the term, I give it feel-good legislation, but it is what it is, and because we are good legislators up here, we'll handle the process accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. You know, one of the things I just consider with these amendments, you know, again, thinking statewide when we look at other counties, I mean, there's been recent examples of counties that had two-term term limits that have moved to three terms. And that becomes my concern as to, you know, why are those local jurisdictions saying, well, two terms is not enough? And, you know, why aren't we talking to those local jurisdictions to hear about, you know, why they made that decision to move to three terms? Because I think we should learn from other counties' examples in designing any sort of structure of term limits. That's my concern, because, you know, the executive branch and the legislative branch are different in how they function and how they work. So, I do think that, you know, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. But, you know, that is my concern. When we look at other counties that are moving to three terms, why would we not look at their example and say that, you know, that's something worth looking at carefully?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Riley?
Also, if you think about it, the nice thing about this, if Councilman Pennman does get his 10,000 signatures, again, the voters will have choices. They'll be able to make that decision. Nothing wrong with the voters making that decision. Also, if we just, if we as a council would do this, then you would be robbing District A of having Deion on the council this evening. You could think that's good or bad, and we'll leave that up in the air, but.
At least if you were in District A, right?
But they would be denied their representative if they couldn't have Deion on the council. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you. I've been an advocate for the term limit bill from the time I came on the council. I think that it needs to be decided by the voters, and I think that three terms is meaningless, and let's put it on the ballot and let everyone decide. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, Ms. Dixon, I just want to remind everyone, we're looking at amendments 1, 2, 3 to Bill 23-028. Call the roll.
Mr. President?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
No.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
There being five votes, or excuse me, you have five votes and a negative, two votes in the affirmative, the amendments 1 through 3 hereby are failed or have failed. Amendments 1 through 2 to Bill 23-029, Tax Credit Nonprofit Swim Clubs. Mr. Pennman?
Amendment number one, on title page and third, fourth, and fifth lines in each instance after the word real, insert and personal property. Amendment number two, on page one and line 14, after county, insert real and personal.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to pass amendments number 1 and 2 to Bill 23-029.
Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Guthrie, was that you?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendments 1 and 2 to Bill 23-29. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, amendments 1 through 2 are hereby approved. 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 23-027, Apartments B3, General Business District as amended. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-027 as amended.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve, or excuse me, yes, to approve Bill 23-027 as amended. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill, along with 2311, the original version, has been difficult legislation. Bill 2311 was fundamentally flawed, and there were some unintended errors in there that would have still allowed apartments in mid-rise apartments in B3. It needed some revisions. And it seems like forever ago, myself and Council President Vincenti stood in front of the Foston Community Group with Kate, and we discussed revisiting 2311 in a different version. I want to thank the community members for their passion and input on this legislation. I also want to thank the community members for their help and input in the work group. I believe the work group produced a solution with reducing the footprint and impact from the originally proposed development. And if this bill were not to pass, I would, I believe it would have been a viable option. While the work group's solution wasn't perfect, I think this legislation isn't necessarily perfect. This bill pushes standalone apartments in the B3 zoning classification along the Route 40 corridor. In addition, if the county continues to stop growth, the economic impact will be crippling. With that said, I do believe this bill is still compromised and still allows apartments in B3 under special development and mixed use. As it relates to the Mountain Road Project, the bill does not stop development, and I'm concerned over the impact of the other B3 permitted uses. Obviously, one of those was suggested last week, which is transient housing for rehab facility. If that were to come to fruition, I would wonder how many would prefer the 48 senior living apartments. With all that said.
Mr. Pennman, hold on just a minute. I'm going to remind everyone in this room to keep your comments to yourself, or I'll ask you to leave these chambers.
With all that said, I do understand the community's concerns and understand the importance of this issue. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Is there anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Bill 23-027 as amended is hereby approved. Bill 23-028, Charter Amendment Term Limits as amended, or excuse me. That's right.
It can be.
Bill 23-028, Charter Amendment Term Limits, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-028 Term Limits.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 23-028. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jan Giordano?
Well, I think going back again, and I'm just going to reiterate that, both Councilman Pennman and Councilwoman Boyle Sodles both initially came out looking for a three-term term limit, okay? They, what they didn't want was the succession, not two terms, but three terms. So, the compromise that we tried to make back then was to add the succession, which is now being added to this bill. And if he does get his 10,000, we'll have people vote, and they can choose which one it'll be. So, thank you, Council President. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. Have we, has anybody reached out to the Board of Elections to seek clarification on just what this will look like on the ballot if both are there? And like how it's decide, you know, both get 50% or more of the vote as separate questions, what happens? I was just curious as what the process will be if Councilmember Pennman is able to receive his 10,000 signatures having, you know, two questions that are about the same topic on, you know, the election sheet. You know, which one gets listed first? How do they determine which one wins? You know?
So, if I may, there was some conversation, but to be honest with you, sitting here tonight, I don't remember what the outcome was. So, if we would desire, we can make that call tomorrow. Actually, not tomorrow, but someone else can make it tomorrow. I'm not going to be here, so. And we can get an answer to your question.
I think that'll be good for the community at large to know.
We'll take care of that tomorrow. Someone will. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Abstain.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
So, we have five votes in the affirmative, one negative, one abstention. Bill 23-028 is hereby approved. Bill 23-029, Tax Credit Nonprofit Swim Clubs, as amended. May I have a motion?
Make a motion. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Pennman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Yes. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 23-029 as amended. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Bill 23-029 as amended is hereby approved. Bill 23-030, Restaurants Moratorium Continuation, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-030 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Not as amended, no.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Want to restate your motion?
Yes. Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-030.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 23-030, Restaurants Moratorium Continuation. Is there any discussion? I do believe that we had some discussions today with Mr. Richardson in a memo that we received from Planning and Zoning and possibly the Health Department as well. So, I think if this is going to, at some point, just be standard practice down the road, we may have to make some revisions to the zoning code. So, that is something that we'll be looking at over the next six months or so. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
Just a question. This takes this out another year, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then at that time, we'll take a look at it.
Yes, sir.
See if there's a way to make it permanent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Bill twenty-three dash zero thirty is hereby approved. Agenda item number twelve, enrollment of bills. Bill twenty-three dash zero twenty-seven, apartments B three, general business district as amended. Bill twenty-three dash zero twenty-eight, charter amendment term limits. Bill twenty-three dash zero twenty-nine, tax credit non-swim, swim clubs as amended. Bill twenty-three dash zero thirty, restaurants' moratorium continuation are certified as being the text finally passed. Agenda item number thirteen, unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen, new business, we have none. Seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. And Ms. Dixon, before you call your speakers, I want to remind everyone that you will be respectful of everybody in this room this evening. You will not be able to speak to any action items this evening. And with that, call your first speaker.
Kate Ganano, followed by Debbie Schreiber.
How many speakers do we have, Ms. Dixon?
Nine.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. My name is Katie Ganano. My address is twenty-three twenty Franklin's Chance Court, Foston, Maryland, two-ten-four-seven. Can you tell I live in Foston? Oh, the clock's already started, okay. First and foremost, I would like to thank the county council members who have not only listened, but taken action to help each district and Harford County as a whole, to help preserve its charm and help catch up with infrastructure. I'd like to thank each of your aides for their assistance. They have been really wonderful throughout the past couple of months, especially Samantha Harris, Mr. Vicente, she's been really wonderful. She has been outstanding with communication and you know I've had absolutely no shortage of it. I sincerely appreciate her and all of your aides. I also appreciate all of you who have gotten back to me. I know I am doggedly persistent. I'm still concerned about overdevelopment, not only in Foston, but in Harford County as a whole. In my opinion, it's too much without infrastructure being caught up. Infrastructure is just not here. I would like to know if we have, if you all have talked more about building moratoriums. Mr. Guthrie, I know you have mentioned that in the past. Sorry, I don't have everything written down that I wanted to talk about and I also dropped my spotted lantern fly information when I was leaving. Nonetheless, oh, I wanted to speak just very briefly about the apartments in Bel Air, not, not, you're wrong, not, not the Foston ones. Even though I know that the town of Bel Air is its own entity, everything is connected in Harford County and that concerns me. I know you guys are not the decision makers on that, but it still impacts infrastructure, traffic, roads, schools, the hospital, et cetera, et cetera. So, I want you guys to think about that some. I'm not exactly sure how you can help on that, but I'm sure that you all are smart, so we can figure something out. I do have research about spotted lantern flies, so I'm just going to go off the top of my head from the research that I've collected over the past couple of months. But there's a connection between spotted lantern flies and overdevelopment, which is actually quite intriguing. I'm not sure if any of you either in this room, up there, have noticed an influx in spotted lantern flies recently in Maryland and in particular Harford County. There are these trees that are called, they're nicknamed Tree of Heaven. I'd have to look up the scientific name because I just don't recall, but they're pretty much more like a Tree of Hell. And the spotted lantern fly really, really likes this particular tree and if they're not disposed of properly during excavation of properties, the larva can live for a surprisingly long period of time. And then when logs and other debris is transported throughout the community, they can hitch a ride. They're very durable little buggers, no pun intended, and then can mate, procreate elsewhere. And the overdevelopment, again, if the trees are not disposed of properly, they, it's, they can spread rapidly. So, there have been some vineyards I know that were impacted over the summer and other places. Next time, I'm going to make sure I have my papers with the concrete evidence, but it's riveting, at least to me. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Debbie Schreiber, eleven fourteen Stromco Drive, Foston. Thank you, Mr. President and council members for allowing us to speak. I just wanted to read the importance of Council District B in Harford County. The community members-
Schreiber, can you speak up to the microphone a little bit, please?
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I can't see. The community members of District B deserve a representative that's in the position for the right reasons, to do what's right and not be self-serving. You and your pigeon, opinions matter and should be heard. As your county councilman, I am active and present in the community to listen to your, to your concerns and issues. As your representative on the county council, I support you and your voice on the importance and pressing issues that, and will make positive changes. I just wanted to read what was written about a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Diana Sadowski, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Hi, Diana Sadowski, eleven thirteen Stromco Drive, Foston, Maryland, two-one-zero-four-seven. Across our state, we can see the results of bad politics and how it's destroying the cities. That destruction is no longer limited to that area, but it's spread to the suburbs and beyond. Just look at rising crime. Just this past Sunday in broad daylight, people were robbed in the parking lot of the Walmart in Nottingham, not too far from here. This is just an incident that made local news. How much more is happening that we're not hearing about? Rising crime accompanies high-density housing projects. So, by all means, let's build more voucher, I mean luxury apartments. Can we not learn from surrounding counties' experiences? For example, Apartmentsville, I mean Calquiesville, Harco will experience their same woes as the apartments rise out of Harford Mall and the Bel Air Township. Now, what I find truly disturbing, and all of you should too, is that out-of-state investors are dictating what the growth of our county should look like. They don't know Harford County, they don't know its residents, they have their own state's influences, albeit Massachusetts, Virginia, or any other state. And I say, stay put and improve your own state. Mr. Penman, for weeks now, we've had to endure your excitement about your developer friend lowering the number of residences and adding the fifty-five-plus designation to the proposed development in Foston. Well, after last Friday's Aegis article, and I'm sure you've seen that, I'm sure we've all kind of seen that.
Ms. Sadowski?
Yes.
I think you should hold up there. You're getting too close to what we took care of this evening. So, I'd rather you go in a different direction, please.
Okay. Well, Mr. Penman brought it up, so I figure it's fair game. We can talk about what was said in that article.
The legislation has been settled this evening. You can bring it up next week.
Okay. We're talking about pants of least resistance-
Yes, ma'am.
-that's being presented to the community-
Yes, ma'am.
-which I think is total hogwash. And for anyone to be excited about putting transitional housing in the Foston community, irreparable. And to think that they want to put transitional housing close to where a liquor store is in walking distance, or bars and restaurants, that's delusional. Our community has spoken out and still you don't listen or care. You've got to stop the game playing. There are lessons to be learned that not all investments are good ones or guaranteed successful. We've also invested in the community, but the big difference is that we're not interested in making a fast or guaranteed buck off the backs of those who live in the community. It's past time you put the community's needs first, but that requires listening to your constituents and we know from experience that's not your interest. Our quest for happiness is truly an individual thing. For some, it's a new home, a new car, more zeros in a bank account, or perhaps self-perceived prestige in politics. However, keep this in mind, I've never seen a Brink's truck following a hearse.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I say thank you?
No, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, twenty-four oh-two Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. Chapter five, when nothing else works, blow it off. On one December twenty-twenty, while I was offering my comments, I asked that the council stop multitasking and listen to what I was saying. Council President Vicente called me that evening and told me that he was taking notes on my comments and that I owed him apologize. I requested that Council President Vicente act to resolve my concerns regarding the zoning and land issues I identified. He agreed to do so, I agreed to apologize. At the fifteen December twenty-twenty council meeting, I did apologize to Council President Vicente. We had two meetings regarding the issues I raised, then nothing. On ten August twenty-twenty-one, I sent an email to Mr. Vicente requesting an update on his effort to resolve the issues that I presented to him at our last meeting. On ten August twenty-twenty-one, I got a reply. Thank you for your reminder and patience. We'll set something up in the next week or two, and then nothing. Those issues are still unresolved and requests for further updates are left unanswered. On eight February twenty-twenty-three, I sent an email to County Executive Casely outlining land use and zoning issues, and I got an immediate response. Dear friend, thank you for reaching out to my office today via email. Your concerns and needs are extremely important to my office and to Harford County government. If you have emailed us today about a constituent service issue, a member of my constituent services team will respond shortly to further assist you. If you have emailed me about attending an event or asking for a proclamation certificate, a member of my scheduling team will reach out to you when a decision is made. All other requests will be reviewed within the next two business days and responded to appropriately. We appreciate you taking the time to email my office today and look forward to responding in a timely manner. I knew immediately that there is a difference between Mr. Casely, the new guy, and his predecessor, Mr. Glassman, the last guy. Mr. Casely is taller and most likely spends less time combing his hair. The rest, maybe not so much. I know Mr. Casely is the next guy. I'm not sure he's the right guy, a better guy, or just another guy. I never did get an answer or a response to my email. Now, there are three types of stories. The fairy tale opens with "once upon a time," usually filled with personal sadness and tragedy, and ends happily ever after. The war story opens with "this is no fooling," filled with epic bravery and courage, and ends with everyone a hero. The political parody begins "when I'm elected," filled with mischief and silliness and road apples, and it doesn't end soon enough. There are bright lines between hope, reality, and expectations. And finally, I'd like to extend my gratitude to all the members of the armed forces and all the people that serve in any capacity in this country and to the families who support them. Good night.
Thanks, sir.
Kate Purbelski, followed by Matt Chandler.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Name an address, please.
My name is Kate Purbelski. I live at twenty-two seventeen Edinburgh Drive in Foston. I am also the treasurer, secretary of the Mountain Roads Donnybrook Woodcrest Improvement Association. Some of our residents are elderly or in poor health and would love to be here tonight, but it's difficult for them to get here and they asked me to speak for them. First, I want to thank you all for voting for the bill. That, scratch out some of the things I was going to say. It's a start. It's a start and it's a start in the right direction. Because we say no to more traffic, we say no to more accidents on a mountain road at every intersection. We say no to paving over the Wildcat Branch or damaging it in any way. We say no to school overcrowding. We say no to overcrowded rec programs. Our community and our children are too important to us. I'm quoting here from the Maryland Department of Planning, Models, and Guidelines, number twenty-four. In plain English, an APFO, Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, says, if the roads are too congested, if the schools, classrooms are too crowded, if the water system cannot provide enough water, if the sewer pipes in, or treatment plant are full, or if there are not enough playing fields for recreational use, then development cannot be approved until the problem is corrected. The premise of an APFO is that growth should be directed to suitable areas where facilities are adequate. And then I wanted to address impact, impact fees. Lauren Heiser from Foston, our Foston person, she did a phenomenal job researching this topic extensively, and I found the facts astounding, that other counties collect so much more from developers. Just one example is the hundred-and-eighty-four apartments at Hickory. If these same apartments were built in Frederick County, the impact fee would be one-point-six million dollars. In Montgomery County, it would be three-point-one million dollars. In PG County, it would be three-point-six-five million dollars. And in Harford County, it would be a measly two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. That's twelve-hundred dollars times a hundred-and-eighty-four apartments. Harford County hasn't updated impact fees since two thousand and four, when we were still, still using a flip phone and beepers. The council has dropped the ball. It's beyond time to make changes to impact fees in order to slow growth and generate funds to provide adequate public facilities before development occurs. And I just want to thank you again for your votes tonight and for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please, no applause, please, please. Good evening, sir. Name an address.
Good evening. Matt Chandler, eight forty-one Ripple Stream Court, Joppa, Maryland, two-ten-eight-five. There's thirty-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine homes in Foston. I think the number of attendees, attendees for a community input meeting on August eleventh were about seven-hundred-and-fifty, and those are only the ones that could fit in the gym. That's a lot of people who are concerned about their community, whether it be Perryman, Foston, or any other community or county as a whole. We need to take into consideration the burden on our existing infrastructure. When considering future bills, I implore you to focus on these concerns that we all bring up: functioning hospitals, top schools, keeping crime in check, usable roads, functional public utilities, and a sustainable environment. You all have been elected to enact laws and protect these very basic but critical functions for the public. Please continue to take this very seriously. Reflect on concerns citizens have and why so many have shown up over the months for a few key bills. There is much in common. I can't imagine it's like this every Tuesday, but I've only been to three of these meetings. Mr. Vicente, Mr. Bennett, thank you for your prompt responses. I'm still waiting on Mr. Penman's call from mid-October for questions about Bill twenty-three oh twenty-seven. There is no need to call back at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Brianna Coleman, followed by Rick Metzner.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Good evening, Brianna Coleman, twenty-three forty-seven Ingle Road in Foston. Good evening, nice to see you all again. I wanted to thank each of you for taking time out of your busy schedules to have discussions with me personally over the last few weeks and months. I hope this is just the beginning of more conversations and legislative changes that benefit all of Harford County. I've been coming to council meetings since September because I strongly believe we need to and can make positive changes together. I hope to see the legislation on lowering the APF school threshold Councilman Guthrie promised soon, as well as hopefully coming back next week to listen to the presentation about the hospital. I also hope that you are working behind the scenes and having conversations regarding the impact fees, which were just discussed. Those are the fees paid by developers for the impact the development will have on the community, with a large portion going to fund the construction of schools. The impact fees for apartments in Harford County are currently on clearance compared to other counties, as you just heard. I think we can all agree that a student living in an apartment has the same impact as a student living in a single-family home and the fees need to be adjusted to reflect that. Harford County is a great place to live, work, raise a family, and to visit. I think we can all agree on that, as we wouldn't be here in this room if we didn't. In the scope of the world, the issues at hand are minuscule, but they are still issues that need to be addressed and corrected, and I hope we can continue to work together to make positive changes that benefit the citizens that live, work, and choose to raise their families here in Harford County. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Yes. Richard Metzger, twenty-four oh-five Edwards Manor.
Richard Metzger, 2405 Edwards Manor Drive, Forest Hill, Maryland, 21050. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to bring to your attention a few thoughts that perhaps what we've been debating is nothing more than a smokescreen. Thanks for gathering and discussing a vital topic that I believe to bring us back to something that directly affects the economic pulse of our small county, and that is the future of warehouses and their indispensable role in e-commerce. In recent years, we've witnessed a monumental shift in the way we shop and in the way we do business. The rise of e-commerce has revolutionized the retail landscape, and at the heart of this revolution are warehouses. These expansive spaces bustling with activity have become the backbone of our society. They're the engine rooms where products are stored, processed, and swiftly dispatched to our doorsteps, ensuring that the virtual marketplace seamlessly connects with our everyday lives. For small counties like ours, where traditional economic avenues like residential construction, home sales, are facing challenges, many of us, we see the interest rates. No deeds are being recorded right now. No mortgages are being recorded, which in turn feeds to public safety, which is a lack of tax revenue coming in. So while we've been debating these issues, I just want to encourage everybody that the real issue we got to go back to is what could potentially happen if we don't really dig down and draw a conclusion on what we're going to do with these warehouses. Speaking of this for a moment, let us also understand the connection between these tax dollars as it pertains to public safety. Here's what I know. I live in Edwards Manor, which is a beautiful neighborhood situated in Forest Hill. In the past six months, we've had four break-ins and two stolen vehicles. Crime is on the rise, whether we want to face it or not. These things should not be happening in our neighborhoods. Imagine for a moment the alternative, if we choose to ignore the potential of what these warehouse spaces offer, we risk stalling the economic heartbeat of our county. We don't want our tax dollars to rise, but there's a gap between what's happening now with the rates and the current market that we need to sit down to discuss what it means from the perspective of public safety, because I'm concerned, and I have a toddler. Supporting, in choosing to support warehouses, we make a deliberate choice to shape our own destiny, and we recognize that the future of commerce lies in the digital realm and warehouses. Otherwise, we risk becoming like Route 66. If anybody studied Route 66, Route 66 was taken over in the modern age because they failed to adapt, and they were taken over by the road system not adapting. So I'm just asking you to consider what it can mean for the future.
Thank you, sir.
And the last speaker this evening, Bill Whalen.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Name is Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland, 21015. My topic tonight is Board of Appeals Authority for zoning case decisions made. It's not a new subject, and it's been brought to the attention of the council and the administration via meetings for some time. In my comments tonight, I'm going to use the word "board" to mean the Board of Appeals in County Council, because by the charter and the zoning code, the county council is the Board of Appeals, so that will be eased. The Administrative Law Department has stated the board does not have any enforcement authority for the decision it makes. They go on to say the executive branch is not obligated to enforce final decisions of the board, and pursuit of enforcement actions are a policy left to the discretion of the executive branch. This is not defined anywhere in the Harford County Charter or Code. The council attorney has stated the enforcement powers of the zoning code is given to the Director of Planning. Unfortunately, the enforcement and penalties for noncompliance are not carried out. There's evidence to that and facts. The burning question is whether the executive branch must uphold decisions of the board and whether the board has the power to enforce its decision. I question, why does the council allow the administration to control their decisions? What is the point in having the board make decisions? By email on October 18th, I requested an answer to two questions. One, do you believe the administration has the unilateral right to ignore the final decisions of the hearing examiner? And two, do you believe the county council should continue as the Board of Appeals? I received no response to those questions from any council member except a reply from Mr. Bennett. I responded and thanked him with comments. Here are some findings. There's 23 counties in the state of Maryland. Harford County is the only county where the council is designated as the Board of Appeals. I found through research that the Maryland Code Land Use, Subtitle III, Board of Appeals, Section 4 S301 states, and I quote, "The legislative body may not serve as the Board of Appeals." Sounds like we're the only noncompliant county. In conclusion, I think there's two choices going forward. As the legislative branch, the council, make an amendment to the zoning code that gives the council the power and authority for enforcement of border seals decisions, or follow the requirements of the Code of Maryland and all the other counties in Maryland. Establish a Board of Appeals that is independent of both the legislative and executive branches of the county government, giving them the authority to make and enforce final zoning decisions. Of course, this will require a charter and code amendment, and may be the best choice and more beneficial to the citizens whom you serve. Continuing as is is not an option, and we already know the problems it's caused. I believe pursuant to the council rules of procedure of public participation, I think a response is due to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whalen.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
All right. Let's move to Agenda Number 16, Business from Council Members. Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Thank you all for being here tonight. Just want to cover a few things I've been up to and a few things that are coming up. Harmerstown opened just, was it this past week or two weeks ago in Havity Grace with Grau Alley? So if you haven't been down to downtown Havity Grace to see Grau Alley yet, it's absolutely beautiful. And all the murals that are up that you can look at to see some of the history of our city and just the art space that's now available for artists in Havity Grace to display their art and work on their art. It's really exciting to see how far that's come. Also, I was able to attend the Historical Marker Installation Ceremony with the Havity Grace Colored High School on 10/28, and that was really exciting to be there for that moment. You know, there's been a lot of work done in the past few years to preserve the history of the Havity Grace Colored School, which carries a lot of pride in our community, and it's important that that history isn't washed away at a time. Dr. Stansberry and all the work of the staff and the students of the colored school should continue to be recognized. So that was great. I was there with Council President Vincenti, and so that was a really nice day with beautiful weather. Continuing to be part of the Vehicle Height Monitor Work Group, you know, that work is moving slow and steady. I'm hoping to have legislation soon that would enable us to put vehicle height monitoring systems in place in Harford County, which is important for safety, to keep trucks off of roads where they don't belong. And in addition to all that, I was able to go to the Library Foundation Gala this past weekend, which was, it was a nice experience. It was good to support our libraries and our library workers for all that they do. I know that we're considering legislation to give our county employees a 1.5% COLA. I know our library workers aren't considered in that, and hopefully our county executive could see with, you know, a slight higher-than-expected surplus in our operating budget, if there would be the money to send over to our library system to support our library workers and also gain that 1.5% COLA. I think that would be appreciated by them as well. Lastly, is a thing that I've been up to, our superintendent, Dr. Bolson, one State Superintendent of the Year. So we recognized him as a county council last night as Board of Ed Liaison. You know, I attend all the meetings, but it was nice to be there to be a part of recognizing him. A few things coming up real quick. On 11/9, Citizens Care, which is in Havity Grace, is having an open house from 5:00 to 7:00. It's a great opportunity to see what they're up to in helping take care of our older community in Harford County. I can speak as a member of their board that they do a lot to make it a great community within Citizens Care, where people feel loved and welcomed. You know, they do a lot of great, and Mr. Walter is a great manager of that facility. The following day, on 11/10, the Discovery Center in the Bellcamp area is having its grand opening at 1:00 p.m., and so I encourage as many of you that are available to be there to just see what they have to offer. It's a really exciting facility. I've now been there twice, and it's just so great that we're getting our own little science center here in Harford County, and I can't wait to see how it grows over time. And then also, I want to celebrate my legislative aide, Heather, who finished Harford Leadership Academy and is part of the Class of 2023. You know, Heather does a tremendous job as a legislative aide, but she's so much more than that as a leader in our community and all that she does. And so I can't wait to see what comes next for her and all the ways that she supports Harford County. And just her doing Harford Leadership Academy and me not is like Exhibit Z of how she is oftentimes better than me. So thank you, Heather. And then I just wanted to, you know, it's, public comments are so important, and I learn a lot. I had had people reach out to me about the impact fees after the listening session in Foston. It's something I've been looking at carefully, but when you put the numbers together, like, that really paints a picture of how desperately it needs to be addressed, because that's, you know, that's money that the county can bring in that oftentimes doesn't even impact our current residents, because it's being paid by out-of-state developers. And so addressing that, we should not be leaving money on the table in that way. But then also, in comment from Mr. Whalen about the county council and our function as the Board of Appeals and how that compares to other counties, I always find those comparisons so helpful, because like, we are in our bubble and in our work, but to look outside of that to see how other places are operating, I think, gives us a better picture of what best practice should look like and be like. So I'll be definitely looking at that in the next few weeks to see, you know, how is the setup across the state and what do other counties look like, to see if, you know, Harford County needs to change, and if so, how. So I appreciate those comments tonight as well. That's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. As we know, Veterans Day is on Saturday, and I would like to take a moment to thank any service members that are here tonight. Freedom is not free, and we do honor you this Veterans Day and always. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Riley?
Yes, I want to thank Commander Herman Schwers for the 22nd Honor Guard Anniversary for the EMS Fire Award Ceremony. The great work that those folks do. Also, I want to thank the company Humpty Dumpster for the empty stocking fund, 150 bicycles, the dumpster's full of toys. And then lastly, I want to talk about Troyer Road, especially by residents in District D. We were able to get the county to hurry up on that road, and we got it a month earlier, because there's a lot of issues with the intersection there in Black Horse, so thank the county for that. And I do also appreciate our veterans, not only here tonight, but in Harford County and USA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Guthrie?
You jumped all the way down to the end? You forgot, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Poor Tony G.
We're coming back this way.
You're coming back?
Yes.
Well, let us know ahead of time when you change your direction. Couple of things. I also want to congratulate the veterans, and particularly my father-in-law, who left us about 10 years ago, and my mother-in-law, Cincinnati, moved in with us, and she's 97. I think she's healthier than me and my wife. But he was a World War II veteran, and I've seen all the medals. He has about a dozen medals. And he's got the Purple Heart twice. He got the Cross. He got the German Medal. He fought in the German War. And when he passed, he still had shrapnel on his body they could never take out, because he was wounded in every time. So we think about him often, and we have all his medals framed, and we have him hanging in the house. I wanted to bring up the fact that I got a call from the Attorney General's Office today, because I have been calling the office numerous times over several months and sending emails and everything else in regards to the rich on the reserves on 152 from that huge construction of those houses there that's causing all the runoff of the water. Agent Celia Glover called me, and first she told me that she couldn't talk to me at first, but because she had to clear with our attorney whether she could talk to me or not. So she wanted his name and phone number, which I gave him. He called, and he said, "Yeah, you can talk to him." So he gave me the clearance, and then she called me back and talked about all the things that I had sent there. And they said, the reason they hadn't called me up to this point about that mess that's there, they know about it, and they took all my calls and everything, and they went, they sent the state people there to examine the construction, everything that's going on there. And they said, she told me, and Mr. Guthrie, everything you told us is true, and more so, that there are violations galore there, and that we intend to bring a suit within the next couple of weeks. We can find these contractors up to $100,000 per incident. And she said, there is all kinds of incidents with this runoff. And the big thing came from, in 2017, the previous administration sent an amendment over to this council, that council then, to strike the 20-acre requirement that was in the law. The 20-acre requirement was that any construction in the county that, where they are building, housing, or whatever they're building, they can only build on the first 20 acres at a time, and when that 20 acres is done, they can move to the next. Well, somehow, the administration sent over an amendment and of a 55-page document that tells you all about all the words they use in the county and definitions of them, like, it starts off with accounting, goes all the way down the line, you know, all the way up to Z, and it's 50-some pages. So somewhere right in the middle of this, there's this little word that says that you can only construct 20 acres at a time. Well, the amendment came out from the administration, previous administration across the street, to strike that 20 acres out of that, and of course, it was very difficult to see, but they struck it. And what happens, that turned out to be this big construction job on 152, where this guy is constructing 100 acres and 388 houses. So instead of just doing 20 acres at a time, he tore down the whole area. And this is what's caused us, in the last two summers, to be flooded with mud and cook and everything in our waterways in Joppa Town and Rumjow and the Gunpowder River, all the way out to the railroad bridge. It seems almost incredible to believe that you could take that huge body of water and turn the whole thing into a mud bath, but that's exactly what happened. And I appreciate the county executive. He's been on them too, and we've had lots of people down there checking all the rivers coming down and all the water coming down the area, and it all's coming from there, and there's no question about where it's coming from. So I bring it up now, because we did have our Edgewood-Joppa Town Community Meeting last night, which last night, which was, is always well-attended. We had about 40 or 50 people there, and I didn't have this information then, so I want to get it out there now because I know a lot of them watched the meeting. So we hope to see some very interesting stuff happen in the next week or month, a couple of weeks or a month for this contractor. I'd like to find a way that you could take these kind of contractors, okay, and you could forbid them from building anything in your county. When they have one that's this bad, there's got to be a way to not allow them to build anything in our county again, because this is an absolute disgrace. That, I did, Mr. Library thing, because I got, we all got assignments to go different places because we have a lot of things on our plates. I wind up going to the 30th Annual Birthday Bash of the Habitat for Humanity, who had an event out in Perryman above Perryville, up above the river. And it was a great day, it was Saturday, and the weather was perfect, and I presented them with a proclamation. So that's where I spent my Saturday afternoon. Also, was at the, talking about the Discovery Center. Myself and Tony G. went there, they had a soft opening last week, and me and Tony went, and it's really an impressive place. So if any, if you ever get a chance, please see that. It's something great for the community. They do have a very large budget, according to what we found out when we were talking to them, what their budget is a year, and it's about $300,000. So they need people to invest some money so they can get, they can get covered. One last thing is also attended, along with President Vicenti and Tony, the Harford Leadership Academy graduation, and we are, three of us are graduates from the Harford Leadership Academy, and when they had their 20th year anniversary, I had the honor of being honored as one of the top 20 graduates of all time. So that was, I really was impressed by that and certainly enjoyed it. Got the thing hanging on my wall. So with that, Mr. President, you can finish going backwards.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Pennman?
As Veteran Day approaches, I too want to thank our veterans that have served our nation to ensure our freedom and democracy, more specifically those Harford Countyans that have served. Robert Brown, the Chair of the Harford County James V. McMahon Commission on Veterans Affairs, just emailed the recent census data for the veterans in Harford County, and it's interesting. The data revealed that 9.7 Harford County residents are veterans. That's about 18,896. Breaking it down by war, we have 187 World War II residents, 1,050 Korean War residents, 5,315 Vietnam War veterans. Gulf War from 90 to 2001 is 6,059, and the Gulf War from '02 or later is 5,582. So I just want to thank those who served. I also want to thank Robert Brown again and the commission members for another successful Veterans Resource Fair that was held on October 21st. Fantastic turnout for the veterans that were able to receive the resources that they needed. I'm also excited to acknowledge that on November 10th, the United States Marine Corps will be celebrating their 248th birthday. It's a big day for the Marines, and they always are excited to celebrate that. I would also like to congratulate Dr. Sean Bolson for winning the Superintendent of the Year last night. Myself and Council President and Councilwoman Giannordano, Councilwoman Bennett attended and presented a proclamation at the school board to Dr. Bolson. Lastly, I wanted to thank the county for follow-up, follow-through on the second half of the 1.5 raise. I'm a firm believer in investing in our workforce. I believe we should do a better job, specifically more than 1.5%. I think we can do an easier job concentrating if we concentrate on smaller government and focus on successful economic development. Myself and Citizen Budget Advisor actively reviewing and analyzing the recent release of the annual comprehensive report for FY '23. We are in the process of getting some critical clarification, and we'll have an evaluation out as soon as possible. I did want to comment just on one of the public comments that was mentioned. At no point did I say I was in support of transient housing anywhere in District B. And Ms. Robber, I appreciate you reading my bio or whatever's online, but I think I lived up to that with the vote of representing the district on this vote tonight. So I appreciate you acknowledging that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Giannordano?
Thank you, Council President. So we've had probably a week and a half or two weeks off, but we didn't have a meeting here, but trust me, we were in meetings working on, working on the bill that we passed, talking to everybody, trying to make sure that we looked at what we could and make sure that we got it right. So hopefully, you know, and we'll keep working. We might disagree up here on some things, but hopefully we can work together and get some things done. So I do appreciate all the hard work and efforts that everybody's involved in. I did attend the Harford Awards, myself, Council President Vicenti, and I think, Dion, were you at Harford Awards too?
Yes.
Yes. And Jacob. Can't remember all those things. Come on. But if anybody hasn't been to Crumble Cookies, they've opened up. They're, we did the grand opening, myself, Council President Vicenti. So we got there before they opened to the public. Second location, the first one was in White Marsh. I think they did a soft opening. They weren't telling everybody, but the cookies were great, and I want to, a big thank to Aurora. She actually got us a party pack, so we've been eating those all day today. So we do certainly appreciate Aurora for that. Bel Air had their annual awards, so the Archer Bowl and the Business of the Year, that was past couple of weeks. And then a couple of us, Council President Vicenti, myself, and Councilwoman Pennman were at University of Maryland, the Stroke Smart. Very important to make sure that everybody knows if you think you're having a stroke or feel like having a stroke, do not drive yourself to the hospital, but call 911. The reason is, they can get prepped and get you ready. When they come in there, the CAT scan is cleared, they have blood clotting or clotting drugs that they can get that out if they get to you within three hours. So very important, anybody you know they think they're having a stroke, call 911. Okay? Please, if anybody remembers anything, if they're having a stroke, call 911. So I do want to thank all our veterans. I know Councilwoman Pennman's a veteran. Dion, were you a veteran?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, I want to thank, want to thank Councilwoman Pennman for his service, and I want to thank, my dad was a Korean War vet, my sister was in the Navy, my brother-in-law was in the Army, my nephew is on a nuclear ballistic sub, he's a nuclear missile tech, and my other nephew just left the Navy, so I'm the only one in the family that wasn't in the service. But I want to thank all the servicemen, appreciate all their efforts. And sad day, sad time is that Gold's Bakery announced that they're going to close for good. They're not going to be able to reopen one of my clients from years ago. Very disappointing. I know they tried, sat some hard times, and things just weren't done, but sorry for their closing. And I do want to remind everybody that the health insurance cost went up 7% for the county employees this past year, and the county absorbed all that cost. Okay? So I know they're getting the other one and a half percent, but there was a 7% increase in the cost of health insurance. And if anybody's in the private market, they know what the cost of health insurance is for a family of four. It's six times to eight times what a county employee pays. A lot of people don't realize that. They've never had a business or worked for themselves. The average cost for a family of four is almost $3,000 a month for health insurance. So, you know, it's just, it's almost unsustainable if you're, you know, if you don't have a company that pays for it, but the county did pay the 7% increase last year. So, you know, that is part of a raise. So thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Giannordano. Again, I'm going to start my comments by saying, when you listen to each one of these council members, they're out every day, working on behalf of the citizens, checking in our businesses and supporting the county as a whole. And, you know, we're, by charter, this is a part-time job, and I can tell you it's anything but a part-time job. But you heard many of the events that they spoke to that we attended. I'm just going to touch on a few things here. It's an honor for me each year for the past five years to present to the Harford Leadership Academy and to be able to sit next to either the mayors of our municipalities or the county executive to explain to them how government works and bring them up to speed with some of the issues that we have throughout the county. So I had that opportunity to present to them again the other day and then also attend the graduation, and congratulations, Heather. It is a long process, but it is very beneficial, and you'll learn things there. Even if you're a lifelong resident of the county, you learn many things through that academy, and I highly recommend that anyone that has an opportunity to do it, take advantage of it. Also, we had an opportunity to sit in this chamber on the other side and present to the state delegation as they were here to listen to the county's legislative priorities. They did remind me, when I stood up at the microphone, that I only had three minutes. So...
But he took four.
Also, had the opportunity and the pleasure and the honor to sit through the Harford Business Roundtable for Education's Annual Meeting. We do that every year. We also went to the Harford County Tourism Summit and sat through that, listened to all of our partners throughout the tourism industry here in the county, and what a great value it is that it brings not only revenue to the county, but it also brings a tremendous amount of support for all of our local businesses as well and nonprofits. And when I talk about tourism, and we, you heard Jacob speak to Harmerstown and Havity Grace, Alan Fair is the gentleman that's bringing that out of the ground. And I've known Alan almost all my life, and I don't know any other individual in this county that has put his time, talent, and treasure to support the arts in Harford County and specifically the city of Havity Grace. He's done an outstanding job there, and I wish him all the best in the future. We talked about the colored school, outstanding facility there. Again, supports our heritage, our local history. The, Dr. Bolson, with his recognition you spoke to. So these are just a few of the things that I want to speak to. When we talk about honoring our veterans, we here on this dais honor our veterans every day, not just on Veterans Day. We do our best to recognize them, we do our best to show them our gratitude and support every day. So I wanted to point that out. And then finally, in closing, I want to express my deepest condolences to Henry Holloway, his family and friends due to the passing of his wife Barbara. She was truly a pillar in the ag community, and she will be missed by all who knew her. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.